So that's why it's so big, but it gave you a really good indication of what we're, you know, considering probably top end for residential.
Have they gotten smaller since you put yours in?
I just didn't put in two years ago.
Oh, okay.
So that's pretty much the state that they are, obviously, back then.
Okay.
The new thing now is that we're going to the solar shingles. But again, you know, by the time that technology hits the market, this should be on there. We can update it accordingly, but...
It would be covered as a building integrated.
You know what? You're right. You're right. It's not specific, but it's in general covered under what's in here, so.
I only have one other question. I think it's more for Ryan than for you. Are we considered a municipality under the definition of this, for purposes of this law?
We are, so we don't...
So we can be exempt?
Yeah, a publicly owned, so lands owned by public are exempted from the law.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Right, yeah, that's defined it's typically here too, is that?
Thank you.
Municipalities.
Thanks, Bill.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just reading my motion and all the public hearing open until next meeting.
I think we can close it at this point.
I didn't know whether he wanted another crack at it. I think that's what he had said. Do you want?
Yeah, I just, I think he could...
I mean, he could certainly provide us feedback to me and I can let the board know.
Okay, that's fine with me.
There's nothing really earth shaking in here, just, you know.
I make a motion to close the public meeting.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, moving on to the public hearing number two, site plan for Mount St. Mary's Hospital's storage of flammable materials, and I will defer to Carol again.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the town board of the town of Lewiston on the 12th day of March, 2018, at 6:15 PM at the town hall, 1375 Bridge Road, Lewiston, New York, pursuant to the code of the town of Lewiston, section 169-4, regarding a proposed site plan involving storage of flammable materials at Mount St. Mary's Hospital, located at 5200 Military Road. At such public hearing, all persons interested who wish to be heard will be heard, dated February 26, 2018.
Thank you, Carol. Also, on this, no one's signed up for that public hearing. Is anybody else, anybody here that would like to be heard on the Mount St. Mary's flammable materials? Okay, we have the engineer for Mount St. Mary's. Would you like to speak at all?
Actually, yes.
Okay.
The first thing that caught my eye, caught my ear was the flammable materials. It's diesel fuel storage for the new emergency generators that we're going to be putting in to upgrade their electric service, and diesel fuel is typically not flammable. It's a, it needs pressure in order for it to be ignited. So, that's, that's the first thing, but just...
Our code requires it for fuel tanks.
Okay.
And it's fuel, so.
Right, right. So, the scope of the project is, Mount St. Mary's is upgrading their 50-year-old electric service, and with that, we're also upgrading the emergency generator systems, and includes two storage tanks for diesel fuel, one 6,000 gallons, one 10,000 gallons. We're also putting a new electrical distribution substation outside the generator room to distribute the power and upgrade the service.
I was at some previous meetings, and if you just want to let the board know how many days of electrical service that's supposed to provide to the hospital?
Fuel supply code requires we have 96 hours of fuel backup for the generators running full capacity, so we've equated that to the 16,000 gallons total.
Okay. Anybody, anybody have any questions?
I have your name for the record.
I'm sorry.
Darren O'Hara.
Mr. Cannon.
Yeah, go ahead. Just one thing, I remember when it was reviewed, the planning board previously, the, there was a discussion about the containment, see for any spillage or anything. Now, there's a containment system that's part of this design that should be any spillage or leakage that be contained on site, correct?
It will be contained within the enclosure of the tank. It's a double-wall tank, so the, there's a leak detection system inside the double wall, and if there's any leakage, it would be picked up by that and alarm the facility. So, there's two levels, three levels of, before you get any spillage.
Is there anything on the ground, like a curb?
Rattened or anything? No, it's just a concrete pad because of the double wall. It's not required to have a ratten around it.
All right, good thinking.
Tim, you want to make any comments? I know we talked extensively about this.
That was, been through the planning board. We did a review on it, and fire is good. I'm good.
Thank you very much. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to agenda approval. I have to make, I have to make one addition under new business in regards to a CWM-GHD conflict of interest.
I have two additions.
Go ahead.
I have two resignations from the police department and also proposal of highway departments to 84 agreement for supervisor's signature.
I have two, a brief notification of a meeting in regards to waterfront property, meeting that's coming up, and a national month recognition. Hi, one, two.
Go ahead.
It's a notification basically about the, an event going on at the public library.
Under car charging station for me, I have a resolution tonight for that. Okay. And I also have a resolution for, in regards to the Lower River Road park that the town owns. Make a motion to approve the agenda as a matter of fact.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Okay, the local law involving solar energy systems, I believe there'll be no action taken tonight. Yeah, so we're going to old business. Moving on to the site plan, Mount St. Mary's Hospital's storage of flammable materials. Moriel?
The planning board meeting in regular session on February 15, 2018, review the site plan review for Mount St. Mary's Hospital, Military Road, SPL number 115.00-1-2.11. The planning board recommends approval of the site plan as presented. Like to make a motion to accept that?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I know we have representatives from the hospital here. I just want to confirm that the notices were sent to...
Yes, I have, I have proof. If you need a copy of it.
Yeah, could you please provide that proof to the town board under our code? We have to have that filed.
Thank you.
So I would just acknowledge, we see that the town board has received filings related to notifications provided to the adjoining property owners as required under our code. Now, let's move forward the motion. I apologize for the interruption.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Moving on to the abstract, Councilman Jacoby.
I move to approve the regular abstract of claims for fiscal year 2017, number 3987 to 3987, and for the fiscal year 2018, number 476 to 669, and I recommend payment in the amount of $156,228.56, plus a post audit of $0.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Approval of the minutes from the regular town board meeting on 2/26/2018. Taking a motion to approve the minutes.
So move. Making a motion, sorry.
Could I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
One extension.
One, one extension. Opposed? So move. Department head concerns. Chief Prendergast.
Chief Prendergast, come to the agenda.
Okay, Tim Masters, anything? Bill Conrad, anything else? That'd be supervisor? No. Finances on the agenda? Bob Lanin?
On the agenda.
Yeah, the agenda, Ryan's on it. Dave Train?
Rob, you want to address the lighting or no?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion in the yard for the highway. We have two poles that are owned by the town to replace the lighting to an LED with a cost of $727.80. That'd be $363.90 per unit.
Second. Hold on, do we have anybody paying 80%? You've been ran around 80%.
We are, we have to call out to that, someone to find out if there is any...
Okay, does any, yeah. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No coupons on this.
Excuse me, where would the funds be coming from?
They're coming out of Miami, Vegas, general.
Thank you.
Can we take them out of, can we take them out of?
NIPA. It might be qualified from the NIPA fund.
I think you probably would. It's energy related.
Yeah, absolutely.
Show you how to do that.
So Marty, you tell us where the funds are coming from.
NIPA.
Okay.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Dan.
Do you want me to address the 284, or 284?
We can do that now. I, I, yeah.
So, Mr. Train's provided a 284 agreement to spend funds for improvement of our roads for the 2018 fiscal year. All councilmen have signed it up. Checked it with council, and it meets the proper form just to take care of Walmore Road, Elliott Drive, Jared Drive, Cleghorn Drive, and Callan Drive. And, Mr. Train, go ahead and feel free to comment.
All right, and that's the basic thing that has to be sent out to the county afterwards. What I was, what else I was looking at when I spoke, you're all here with Jackie, and I was wondering if I could have the board approval to ever start looking up if I can get some funds out of H97 because of the way the weather was this year. The roads are in outward shape, and that's one of the reasons this came in, so like, should have been in last, end of last month, and I apologize for not getting it in. We went over, surveyed some of the roads. I had my foremen's come through, and this is what it looks like right now, is I'm trying to keep my good roads good, and I'm wondering if I can get approval to have Jackie look up and see if there's any funds available for H97.
Just to investigate?
Yes, to see if there's funds available, because right now, it costs me $82,000 to pave a road. Forty-foot road for a mile, a two-inch stick, it's $82,000. The town gives me approximately $53,000, $54,000.
Per mile?
No.
For a year? Period.
A year. The rest of the funds is $196,000, almost $197 from the state and the CHIPS fund, and that's where the rest of my money comes from. But at that rate, it's going to take me 21 years to make it around to the road again.
Yeah.
So, what I should be doing, 65 miles of road, I should be doing six and a half miles of road a year, and I'm not paving that. It's just not, it's not, the money's not there for the town or for the budget. So if I can get some funding to keep my good roads good, which includes cracked ceiling, maybe a micro-paved, I can extend a life of the roads that are good, because the federal government has restrictions on how the water cup's being made and produced. That's why we ran the last year, we had a palmeir, we tried a fiber, we stone shipped, and then we paved over. So we're experimenting with whatever we can get. I have the engineers from the companies coming in. I have meetings set up with Cambria and with Lafarge to see what, you know, what their materials consist of, and we're going that route with them to see if we can improve on anything. This cost has no repairs to it. You know what I mean? It's just a basic cost of what it costs me to do this, and if I put in weaves or any repairs to the roads, it's going to add new cost.
This is like a maintenance program is what you're...
So I was wondering if I could have Jackie look up.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
If, if you just include the paving that you have the funds for?
Yes.
Will we be getting real far behind?
It'll be 21 years before I get back to that road.
And if we were able to secure the extra funds, do you get closer to where you need to be?
It'll help me save the good roads and keep them good.
So the money, the money we spend now is going to save us money down the road, right?
Yes.
Yeah, penny, penny of maintenance is a dollar, a dollar saved.
Oh, yeah.
Now, how mu, how much is the new paper going to help? I know before, were you limited on how much paving you could do, and we relied on the county's papers?
No, I always had papers available.
You did?
Last time, when county papers went down, I just took the City of Niagara Falls's paper. And they've offered, matter of fact, this year, I'm going to take some of the rollers because they had more compassion, and I'm going to try that route, and maybe that's one of the problems we're...
I think because everybody knows Dave has a really good relationship with the City of Niagara Falls, and we'd like to keep that relationship.
Yeah.
Even the county's been good. They're in, now cutting trees down for me, so they're taking down the dead trees that I had issues with and people's yards.
Well, first, we need a motion to, to research, you know.
You know what I mean? Because I don't know what, what money's available yet. Jackie's new. I don't want to put her on the spot with doing this, so maybe next meeting, I'll see if I can request some funding.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion, authorize supervisor to sign the 284 agreement.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Townsend, anything? Bernie, anything?
Just, we have a meeting Monday morning to go over a few projects.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
I won't make Mondays Monday.
Wednesday morning to go over a few projects, and I'll give you a better report after that.
Is there an update on the, on the trail?
They're still on schedule for September, because it starts September.
Okay.
Well, actually, you know what? We can do this now, Bernie.
Yeah.
I wanted to make a resolution for the Lower River Road Town Park. We discussed it before, and I know I've discussed it individually with everybody, about putting in a paving down to the water, and putting in a couple of pavilions down at the Lower River Road Pletcher Town Park. It would be a Greenway project. It would be Phase 1 of the Greenway project. Phase 2 would be trying to restore the Outfall Building. There's some issues down there, maintenance issues, and getting the Parks Department out of that building, which is a big concern of Tim Masters. So, we don't have a final number on the town park. What I would like is a resolution to present to the Greenway, which we will have everything shored up by the meeting on the 20th, to submit to the Greenway Commission for a town park at the Lower River Road in Pletcher Town property.
Would be, would be a continuation of the, of the park that we have, which would be what you want?
Well, there is no park there now. It's the property we own. We want to put a kayak launch in. We want to have two to three pavilions down there. What it would entail is pulling down, there'd be handicap parking down there. Anybody who would come down to use the pavilion would drop their, their area to drop off, but then they would park up by the Outfall Building. So the only people that could park down by the pavilion would be handicap, and we talked about a kayak launch, which will take some permitting from the DEC, right?
Yeah.
Bob?
Oh, yeah, in the Arm and Core, yeah, that one should, one should, the water, yeah.
Yes.
It's basically going to be a work in progress. We have to put it out and get the public feedback from it and ideas. It'll be modified along the way. This is just the starting point, even though there has been some history of trying this endeavor in the past. This will be a full-fledged movement forward, and it will be a non-motorized launch area. Kayaks, canoes, not motorboats, if it goes in that direction, because it still has to go recreation, environment, the general public. There's going to be a lot. We have to have something to go to Greenway.
And I, and I've met with the Land Conservancy in regards to the Stella project. They refer to the Stella project as a soft project, a soft park, and ours would be considered a hard park, even though we're not going to have buildings or anything down there, but they consider any, anything down there to be a hard park, and that would support the Land Conservancy. And we would talk about the parking areas being, what do you call the, the absorbent, what do they call it?
Porus. Porus, permeable pavement.
Yeah, permeable pavement, and there were some requests from them in regards to that, but the Land Conservancy did come down, and they were all for it.
Table bag, something, right?
Yeah, and they're talking, obviously, they're talking about shuttle stop at the Land Conservancy as well. So we'll have the bathroom, and we would include the, the bathroom would be, not necessarily the bathroom itself, but the area around the bathroom, cleaning that up, putting in a path, possibly some picnic table, maybe even a picnic table up top. So, I just don't know, what was, what's the resolution you need to be able to take before the Greenway?
The resolution? Steve, could I ask a question first?
Sure.
Is there any direct cost immediately to the taxpayer?
Well, it would be Greenway money.
I know, but beyond the Greenway money?
No, there'll be no, there'll be no taxpayer, because it'll all be Greenway.
And do we anticipate any huge maintenance costs or nothing, anything out of the ordinary?
Well, I, I don't anticipate any huge maintenance costs.
Right, we're just going to use...
We all know.
But we're going to use our existing people kind of loans now.
Yes, yes, and Mike Dishon's not here, and I talked to him about it, and he said that wasn't a concern about cutting.
What's the footprint, Steve? Just acreage wise? What's the footprint? I can't remember.
I don't know.
Without Mike here?
I want to say five.
I know, I, I was told 400 foot of frontage. Does it say something about rate, Tim?
Yes.
On the waterfront.
Not, not all of it would necessarily be mowed.
No.
That's what I'm saying, is, I mean, a lot of it is, is green space now, and it would maintain these green spaces above for the Land Conservancy.
And how the pavilions would work is, my idea was that they would be free to use unless you wanted to reserve it. So if you went down there, the pavilion was available, you could use it. If you wanted to have a graduation party or birthday party, and it would be limited, it wouldn't be out until 12 o'clock at night, but probably be dusk to dawn, or dawn to dusk. You would, you would put down whatever, a $100 deposit, I don't know what we'd decide, and then you'd be reserved for that pavilion for the day.
Bernie, that's what Greenway was set up to really be used for.
That's correct. It's a perfect project.
Absolutely, yeah.
Resolution just needs to read that supervisor's going to submit an application to the Greenway Commission for review for a park development at Lower River Road.
So good.
So, no, no money of amount needs to be put in that resolution?
Well, since we don't have...
Still being investigated, yeah.
Since we don't have it, the application has to go in by the 20th, so I'm going to say let's just go without it, and then when I bring it up at the presentation, which will be the third Tuesday in May, I'll hand out a, a modified budget.
And we'll have a budget for, maybe not the next board meeting, the, the next work session. We will have that.
And we're ready to present it. There's quite a bit of history that should be revealed in regards to this project, just how long it's been bounced around.
So we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
I have a request from the town clerk.
Sure.
She wants to add Jackie Mallow as a signatory and a tax collector and town clerk checking accounts at each age.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move. I think that does it for the department. Uh, finance. I, I, I want to say Marty Blasey, but Jackie, no.
The municipal solutions contract is up for renewal. It's a service contract. It's a two-year contract, and it's due on 3/17. So I would need board approval today, as well as to authorize the supervisor to sign the contract.
I read it over and compared it to last year's, and there's a slight increase in fees, and there's also a clause that if you don't do any bonding, you still get $500. That how it was phrased by Jackie? I move for approval of the municipal agreement as presented.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Move to direct the supervisor to sign that agreement?
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
It's 5.66 acres. Thank you.
Okay, anything else for finance? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Under old business, the fire hydrant, the NIPA fire hydrant.
I haven't taught her enough yet to add two more.
You're still sitting there, though.
Enjoy it. It's not going to last long.
Bob Lanin?
Yes, we're getting closer. NIPA has all of the required forms and appendices that they needed. They have responded with the issuance of a purchase order that they submitted to me. I forwarded the same to Attorney Prici, and that purchase order is probably 14 pages with a bunch of fine print. That's under review now, and then once Ryan says it's okay, we'll have to have the town board authorize your signature, and then we'll kick on.
And just, just to reiterate, this fire hydrant for NIPA, I know there's been a lot of work done by the town. There'll be no cost attributed to the town, correct?
That's correct. The, the bids that we received quite a while ago was from Besson. It was slightly over $31,500, okay, and the purchase order is for $42,000. So that'll cover Besson, cover a bit of design, a bit of inspection, and a bit of, for the town.
Okay, thank you very much. Boards commission vacancies. The tower wind, we have a request here from Bill Conrad. He says, please remove the following people from the wind tower committee. One would be Charlene McDonald. So I'd like a motion to remove Charlene McDonald from the wind tower committee.
So move.
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And also, please remove Ernie Krell from the wind tower committee.
Second.
Or so move, I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So move. And then Billy asked to add a new member, by the name of Steve Aurora. However, he did not know he had a second application, so we had two applications. I talked to Bill. Bill agreed with me that we would make a motion to add Steve Lyle to the tower wind energy. Nothing's changed there, has it, Mr. Lyle?
No.
Okay.
So move.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I think I move for, Mr. Lyle, I'll, I'll make a similar motion for Steve Aurora.
No, well, no, we, we only have one open.
I follow.
No, we had two that came out there. We have five, correct, though?
You're right, because I'm out there now.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so we'll make the motion for Steve Lyle. It's up to you. Don't have enough to do.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you for volunteering for that. And I'm sorry, that was supposed to be me and Jacoby. I took your thunder on that. Sorry, buddy.
That's okay.
Okay. Car charging station, Moriel?
I have one other one, from the historic preservation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we want to remove, per the chairperson, Margaret, remove Heather Caparella from the Historic Preservation Commission. She's moved out of town, and this brings us down to the exact correct number of members we need on that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
I would assume they will all get a letter of appreciation.
And now we move to the car charging station, Moriel.
Okay, I've been working with town board on some of these, some of our department heads, Bernie. There's a few things we need to know. We did the lights in the town hall. We're looking actually to, we turn our streetlights into LED. We're in the project of that right now, and this is another step going green. I'm going to propose an authorization resolution for DEC zero emission vehicle, clean vehicle infrastructure rebate program for the town of Lewiston Electric Car Charge Station Project, where areas, the town of Lewiston calls for the installation of an electric car charging station, which would be available to the public, and where it, where areas would be, New York State DEC currently has funding available for the purchase of such charging stations. Therefore, made resolved that the town board authorizes the submission to the DEC zero emission clean vehicle infrastructure rebate program to request funding for electric cars charge station project for the total project amount of $21,634. Be it further resolved, and the town board acknowledges that is responsible for at least 20% of the above total project cost. Resolve that Steve Broderick, as supervisor of the town of Lewiston, is hereby authorized and directed to file an application for funding from the DEC zero emission vehicle, clean vehicle infrastructure rebate program to complete the electric car charge station project. Making a resolution. Can I get a second on that?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I'd just like to commend Mr. Moriel, and I think it's a great project.
You beat me to the punch. How am I...
Sorry.
I want to give...
No, no, no.
I want to give Councilman Moriel all the credit in the world. He asked me about getting involved in this, and I said, go for it, and he's done this all. I think Tim Masters has helped himself quite a bit.
And Marty.
And, yeah, and Marty, and I want to just give him credit, give Rob credit. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry.
Yep.
One question, the 20%, would that be hydro? One question, the twenty percent, would that be hydro?
It would be, yes, like, the H ninety-seven money, correct?
No, it would, the charging station can come out of the hydro.
Okay, the hydro money.
It's a perfect project for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So carried, so move, that would be a move on that. Charging station. Okay, under new business, we were, I was advised, I was advised last week that we had a conflict of interest with CWM and GHD. I wrote, everybody has a, a copy of my letter, I wrote a letter to GHD and Mr. Lannan, our town engineer. His letter is in response. I went over it with Gary Abraham, who's our attorney, representing us in the lawsuit against CWM. It was made clear that any business with GHD and CWM had to cease and desist. And in the second letter, that is basically what has been stated by GHD. I went over these letters with Gary Abraham, our counsel. It satisfied his requirements, and I just wanted to make it aware that we have resolved, I believe, this conflict of interest. So both letters are there, and I just want to make the board aware of it. So we don't need any motions or anything, I just want everybody to be aware of the situation. That'll take care of that. Appointment of court officer. We have an opening as a court officer, and I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ron, Ronald Sesman. Sixty-four-five Ward Road, as a part-time court constable. Court, are we calling, no, court, yeah, court.
Okay, I agree. How does he spell his last name?
S E S, S M A N, Sesman. What I don't have, we have, I'm sorry, do we have a, we was going to start out, I'm worried, do we have that? I just have his application, I don't have his pay.
I don't know what it is.
Okay. I'm trying to, I'm drawing a blank. We had it.
I don't remember what it was.
So how do we, can we refer to the court budget?
Do we have a set starting salary?
Yeah, we do, we, we set a start, a starting salary for him, I just don't have it with me, and I, I mean, obviously we budgeted for more because the gentleman who he's replacing was making more years, so it's in the budget, but I don't have a.
But his hourly rate was contained in the budget?
No, not for a new hire, it is for the previous, but we're not paying him that much.
No, he's going to make less.
Less. Okay, and we'll, I'll move the table up for now until we get an exact amount.
I'm not even sure where that would be, that I could go find it for you.
Yeah, Amy Smith would have that. I hope he wasn't expecting to start in the next two weeks.
Probably was.
Yeah.
If he's hard, he just can't get paid.
Yeah, well, that's good, I'm sure he'll do that. So, okay, we'll table that for now.
If you did have to work, would you do it as a per deal?
Uh, I'm sure, I'm sure they're fine, I think it's April that they're concerned about, so I believe we're fine.